Okay. Do I, should I say that again?
I, I heard you.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Vandell?
Here.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Commissioner Busher?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
And Chair Chase?
Here. Great, please join me in a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to public religious stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, I see that we have Anne remotely, Anne Danforth is remote. She's eating and smiling, so that's good. At every point in this meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on the agenda, though if there is anybody online to comment, let us know, Tracy.
Online, on the Zoom, and no emails in our public comment inbox.
All right, thank you. We will then close that option for public comment, and we will go to our new hearings. Tonight, we have a hearing of tentative parcel map for 115-117 Redwood Avenue, but Commissioner Rizzo has something to announce about that.
I'm going to have to recuse myself because we are a little, we live a little bit too close to this property within the 500 feet radius, so I'll see you guys in the next item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is a tentative parcel map application, PL 22-0055 for condominium conversion at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. Martha, this is your item to present.
Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the Commission. This evening, you will be considering tentative parcel map application at 115-117 Redwood Avenue. We'll be making a recommendation to the Town Council on this application. Approval of the tentative parcel map will not create a new parcel, but rather it will allow for a separate ownership of the two existing units on this site. And no improvements or modifications are proposed to the structures as part of this application. The subdivision of land in Corte Madera is regulated by both the State of California Subdivision Map Act and also by the Town Subdivision Ordinance, which is codified in Title 17. Title 17 requires both a tentative map and also execution of parcel map before property may be divided into two or more parcels for purpose of lease, sale, or financing. And Title 17 includes a conflict on who the decision maker is for tentative parcel map. A Section 1720-100, which was adopted in 1957, places the authority with the Planning Commission. However, Section 1720-110, which was adopted in 1973, transfers that authority to the Town Council. So staff in consultation with the Town Attorney determined that the Planning Commission will make recommendation to the Council on this particular application. And staff has flagged this conflict, and it's something that will be amended in the future. The project site is zoned R2, multiple dwellings, and it's developed with two standalone detached residences that were legally constructed in 19... Each residence is two stories and is just over 1,200 square feet. There is also a two-car carport at the front of the property that is shared by the... And the project is located at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. It is accessed by Redwood Avenue, and the project site is an irregular L-shaped lot. It is surrounded to the west, south, and east by both single-family and multifamily dwellings, and also across Redwood Avenue to the north are additional multifamily and single-family dwellings. And the project's site is just approximately 6,000 square feet, where the minimum parcel size for the R2 district is eight. The two proposed units are proposed as part of this project. Unit 1 is 115 Redwood Avenue, and Unit 2 is 117 Redwood Avenue. Both of these include a building that is just over 1,200 square feet, and there are also private open space areas and decks for each unit. In addition, a common area is proposed, and this is where the driveway and carport is located, and also there is an access from the carport to the unit in the back. Now, this slide shows the proposed parcelization. The condominium boundary is shown in red. Again, Unit 1 is 115 Redwood Avenue, that is the unit closer to the street. Unit 2 is 117 Redwood Avenue, which is located in the back half of the property. The common area includes both the driveway and the carport, and also access from the driveway-carport area to Unit 2 in the back of the site. And the technical review of this map was done by BKF engineers, and execution of a parcel map will also be required in both the parcel map and then also CCNRs will be recorded with the county. And there is a condition of approval that requires the town to review the CCNRs. And there, the tentative map was included as attachment for your stuff. The existing property is inconsistent with several development standards of the R2 zoning district, which include site area for dwelling unit, setbacks, lot coverage, and parking. At the time when this buildings, the buildings were constructed in 1963, the property was zoned R3, and the lot area per unit was 3,000 square feet. So the property, the buildings were consistent with the zoning in effect at the time. And the Board of Adjustments also approved a variance to reduce the rear yard setback from the required 25 feet to 50. The existing conditions of the property are legal non-conforming conditions, and none of these conditions are being exasperated by the proposed application, and no new nonconformities are being created. And the existing conditions cannot be used as a basis for denying the application. This slide shows the required findings related to a tentative map, and these findings are from the Subdivision Map Act. And a legislative body shall deny approval of a tentative map if it makes any of these findings. Staff does not believe that there is evidence in the record to support these findings, and a discussion is included in Exhibit A, which is the Town Council draft resolution. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the Town Council adopt a resolution approving tentative parcel map, PL 22-0055, with the draft Town Council resolution as included as Exhibit A. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is participating remotely via Zoom and is also available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, so we will check with the Commissioners here to see if they have questions for you. Daniel, do you have any questions for Martha? You're not sure?
I'm not sure. Defer at this time.
Okay. All right. Valerie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of clarifications. So it does state that it has been divided in 1963 and developed as two residences at the beginning, so was there one owner, or there were always separate owners?
So there's only currently one owner, and legally currently there can only be one owner?
Okay.
And by doing a map to do condo conversion, the two units can be sold separately?
Okay, and since there were two residences on that lot, and obviously does not conform to the current municipal code with the parking spaces having the driveway as a parking spot, were there any variances granted from 1963 to now for the parking spot?
There, there were not. There wasn't really discussion about parking. The variance was for the rear yard setback, but nothing related.
So with this application with revision of the map, are they going to also apply for the variances for the parking?
They are, are not required to because it's an existing non-conforming condition. So the site has two covered parking spaces, and then there are two uncovered parking spaces in the driveway. Those don't count as compliance spaces per our zoning ordinance since they're in the setback, and so the application does not meet the parking requirement, but that's how it was constructed, and they're not changing the number of spaces or the configuration of parking. So it's allowed to continue in its...
So does it have a possibility to set a precedent since if, once it's going to be converted and they don't need to even apply for the variances?
I, I don't think it sets a precedent in that, you know, we, these applications are so infrequent, these condominium conversion applications. I can't think of another one that, that we've processed, so I do not think it would set a precedent.
Sorry, one more question. And with the, with the lot, is there's, was there any time at the, you know, historically, was there, did they look at the point where they need to do the split lot instead of converting it to the, to residences?
So they, they can't split it under the normal way to split a lot because they don't meet the minimum lot area, so in order to split an R2 lot, each resulting parcel would need to meet the 8,000 square foot requirement, so they, that's not an option for them. They potentially could split using SB9, which requires a minimum 1,200 square foot per lot. But I think the disadvantage of doing that versus the application they proposed is that the parking would be located on one of the, the, the front parcel versus being able to be a common area that's shared between both of the condominium units. And the applicant can provide additional information if they evaluated splitting it under SB9.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I have.
All right, thank you. Margaret, over to you.
So what I'm seeing here, and is that the reason that they are, have taken this format, the condominium, is because they wanted to sell it separately and they couldn't do it in any other way, the way splitting a lot usually goes?
Correct.
And so, as I also, I guess, first of all, was there any basic neighborhood outreach in this? I didn't see it in the report.
They, we did our normal noticing, and there were no comments or questions received from the neighbors. I think, you know, since the development is not changing, it's always been a property with two units, and that's not changing, and likely didn't generate any controversy or concerns from neighbors.
And as I understand it, you, well, maybe you better lay it out. What exactly are we debating here?
So, in order to disapprove the application, you would need to make one of those findings related to the subdivision map act.
Okay, and the staff is recommending, or they, you've gone through it, and you think it should be recommended to the Town Council?
Correct. And our Town Attorney, Anne Danforth, are also reviewed, staff report and resolutions and staff's recommendation.
Yes, that's right. Okay, and I'm just wondering from Anne, if there is any other kind of legal issue that we should be considering here? Given that there are so many, every single part of this was legal in, when it was first developed, and, and certainly would need to be changed at this point, is there any sort of legal ramification that we need to consider?
Not at this stage. If they were proposing a new development project, new buildings, then we would have obviously significant consideration of that fact, but at the tentative map stage where all they're trying to do is enable separate conveyances of the two structures, there really isn't much to decide, as long as you can, as long as you can't make any of those findings that Martha referenced.
And a number of things that I read refer to the fact that they'll have to put together a governing sort of committee and CCNRs, and I assume that they would have to take into account the local law and regulations when they do that, is that correct?
Yes and no. Condominiums are very heavily regulated by the state, very heavily regulated, so there isn't much room left for the city, cities to get involved. Now, in larger projects, there are sometimes conditions of approval that need to be carried through into the CCNRs, but that's not the case here. We're not approving any development per se, so it will be on the applicant to conform to what's called the Davis Sterling Act, and, you know, correctly form the homeowners association that will own the common area, and correctly compile the CCNRs and record them against the two properties.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Dan.
I do have a question.
So if, if either, once this condominium goes forward, if either property owner wanted to do, for example, an addition, and since it is non-conforming, what would be involved with that? And also, if, if it's, if it was the way it is today with the single ownership of the two units, and they wanted to do an addition, how would that affect the fact that it's non-conforming?
So one of the, well, it, it currently exceeds lot coverage substantially. The allowable lot coverage in R2 is 35%, and between the carport and the two structures and the elevated decks, lot coverage is over 55%. So any proposed addition would further exceed lot coverage, so it's, you've approved very few lot coverage variances, so it's, it's, it's unlikely they could add on to these existing buildings.
Either way, whether the current ownership or the condominium. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions other than how the heck did these postage-stamped lots get created to begin with? So it's kind of nuts in the jumble of lots in the center of town, but here we are with something that's... So you haven't seen these, and it doesn't seem like there's anything anywhere near this in the pipeline that I see it.
So, and typically a condo conversion requires a conditional use permit for multi, multiple dwellings, so if these were attached, it would be considered a multiple dwelling because there'd be two units, and then it's a more robust process. You need, the Commission would need to make certain findings to approve the conditional use permit, so this is really kind of an anomaly.
Yeah.
I have one more question, if I may.
Yes, please.
Were there any historical precedences, since it's a long time that the two residences were on a lot, where there was any public safety concerns from the fire department or any other emergency vehicle access to that property?
No, the fire department reviewed this application. They did not have any, any concerns.
Okay.
Okay, great. So now it's time for the applicant to speak up. So we see Anne on screen, I don't see an applicant yet.
While I promote the applicant. Two applicants rejoining us here.
Okay. There we go. Visual, hi, James.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Thank you for your time. I'm not sure what the questions are other than, you know, it's, it seems like a simple condo conversion for a property with two buildings on one lot. We're not, there is no room to expand either residence. I'm not sure what other questions you have. It, it just seems very simple to me.
Do you, who do you represent?
I own both, I own that lot with the two houses.
Okay, great. And you don't have anything to state about it other than this project description? Or do you have anything else you want to present about the conversion?
I'm not sure what facts would be interesting to you. I've expensed a lot of money in improving it. I have two daughters living in one of each of them now, and want to transfer one of them to my daughter. That's what the purpose of this all was about.
Okay. All right, but you don't really want to have anything else, or you don't have anything else to tell us about this?
I apologize. I'm not sure, this is the first time I've been on a Zoom call for anything like this, and I'm not sure what I would add or contribute to anything. It's, it's, it seems pretty simple to me. It's a beautiful property for two little houses in Corte Madera, and it's a beautiful spot, and that's all I know.
And you're apparently blessed with two daughters, so...
Three and a son. Two of, three of them getting married in eight months, so a lot moving parts.
That's great. So who else is going to speak on behalf of the application? Just you?
Well, you know, I think Derek Wallers, he may be online, and he's the attorney that is representing the condoization and has been doing all the work with Martha and in the group.
Okay.
I, I am here. This is Derek. I'm not sure that anyone's hearing me. Are you? Okay, I'm just not seeing my own picture, so I wasn't quite sure if I'm even here or not, so I guess I am. I was just here to answer questions from a legal perspective. You know, I've done a lot of these condo conversions on duplexes in Marin County where two houses are on a single lot. It makes sense, allows them to be separately owned, separately financed. His daughter can own one, and the other daughter can own the other, and they don't have to be tenants in common and share, you know, property as one. It's a good method of subdividing smaller lots. There's no change in anything but the method of ownership. You know, practically on the ground, nothing's changing at all. And, you know, through this method, they could share the driveways, they could share, you know, common utilities, maintain them together, and we will record CCNRs that details exactly how that all will work.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the other Commissioners if anyone has any questions for either of you. Valerie?
I do, yes. So the question is, have you thought about how the common areas would be managed? Where, did you think about creating some kind of HUA form there and provide us with the legal documents that would state how the two properties would be managed with the common areas?
I could answer that, or maybe Anne. So, so what are the condition of approval in the resolution before you tonight includes a requirement that we prepare and record CCNRs, which will address all shared common management, common use, common ownership issues. An association will be created with two owners. They will manage it through that association, so I guess the answer to your question is yes, absolutely. We will be doing that.
Will...
And the town, the town will review that as part of the final approval of the parcel map.
Okay, and are you guys planning to provide Commission and staff, planning staff, with the documents that would outline how that would be managed?
Yes, that'll be the declaration of covenants, CCNRs.
I have no further...
Okay, thank you. Over to you guys. Dan, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Yeah. Have you prepared CCNRs for other properties in Corte Madera that had subsequently been reviewed by the town?
I don't think I've done one in Corte Madera that's two units. I've done one that was multiple units, done many in Mill Valley, Sausalito, Tiburon, Santa Fel, Roboto, other municipalities in Marin, Snowa County as well.
Okay.
I can't recall one in Corte Madera.
Okay, this will be your first, great.
Well, I mean, they're all, they're all basically the same. It's shared driveways, shared sewer laterals, shared electricity, you know, rules about dogs can't bark too much, that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Over to you, Margaret.
I would like one of the two gentlemen here to address one of the findings that are required, and that is finding C, that the site is not physically suitable for the type of development. Can either of you address that for me, please?
Well, the, the finding is a negative finding, so the finding would be that you'd have to find that it's not suitable for this development. The development already exists. I think through time and existence, it's proven already to be, you know, a, a development that, that, you know, is suitable. It's not a new development. For a new development, you found it not suitable, you could find that it's not a suitable development, but it, it already exists. There's no change proposed.
And, and when you say you, you've had experience with sort of the birth of condominiums in the, have you had the situation where there are two separate physical buildings on a property?
Yeah, it's actually not that uncommon in Marin County. There's a lot of parcels in Marin County that are zoned for multiple family units but are a single lot, and so you'll see two standalone residents on a single parcel. And what that means, it needs to be owned by, both need to be owned by the same people or multiple people, and when it's not condoized or lot split, then that means they're, they own half of each other's house as tenants in common, basically. And so that's not an ideal situation, but there are many parcels in Marin County that are exactly like that.
And for example, what part of Marin County?
Let's see, I did one, Mill Valley, just up the street from Sweetwater. There's, there's a whole row of parcels with two homes on each one, and we've condoized a couple of those over the years. I have. And it really doesn't change anything on the ground. It's still two homes in the same spot, being used in the same way. It's just really a change of the method of ownership, and allows them to be owned separately, financed separately, and they don't own half of each other's homes, which, you know, that's, who wants that?
And do you see that as being owned properly, separately, and financed separately? Do you see that as being the purpose of making, of, of turning this to a condominium?
Well, I mean, that is the driving purpose, is to allow separate ownership. As Jim mentioned, he wants his daughter to own one, and maybe the other daughter, the other, I don't, I don't know Jim's plans of that. But yeah, it's, I think it's beneficial to not only the ownership, but also, I mean, just as a general view on, on land use, and I think it's beneficial to the town. I think it's beneficial to ownership. I don't think it has any downside to neighbors or the community. I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Anything else, Margaret?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, then, we will let these gentlemen go, and we will open it up for public comment at this point.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No raised hands, Chair Chase.
All right, we have no raised hands in the audience, wherever they may be. So with that said, we'll close the public comment on this item, and we'll take it back up here to the... we'll close the public comment on this item, and we'll take it back up here to the dais to deliberate um, at this point. So, um, I must say that um, this was a thorny set of things to work through, Martha, to check all these boxes. So a hard one to make sure it's all okay. Anyway, thank you for that. Um, so we'll start with the commissioners. Uh, Valerie, um, how do you feel about this?
Um, I have a couple concerns that I would love to discuss. Um, and you know, they might be mitigated uh, with, you know, just kind of like thinking through it. But uh, one of them is that, you know, obviously we know that it's small and all potential uh, owners of the condominiums down the road will um, be limited to the development. They will not be able to develop any further than that. Um, the other concern that I have is parking. Uh, that street is extremely busy. Um, there are sometimes parked, you know, cars parked illegally on the driveways um, throughout, considering that they were not varian- variances granted and that the uh, you know, lot is already having only two parking spots. I I presume that whoever owns the condo would be parking on the street. Um, I mean, or again, creating more traffic uh, on the busy street. The other concern that I have is a property value. So if it will be sold as two separate units, it will really bring down um, the property value around because it's already um, considered to be non-conforming. So because it's non-conforming, obviously the property value will go down. And um, and I do have a, you know, kind of questioning about the density of development uh, finding. I cannot find the justification that because this, it's already small lot, um, the density potentially can exceed to what Corder Madera Municipal Code allows in that area. And um, and I know it doesn't say that um, it should be viewed as ratifying existing non-conforming, but it seems like with all of the things that I just outlined, it feels that potentially it could be ratifying the existing non-conforming condition. Um, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, uh, before we hear from the other commissioners, let staff address some of that. And Ann, on that note, um, I think there's some things you could clarify in that.
I'll, I'll certainly be happy to try. Uh, this action does not increase the development potential of the um, of the site itself. It had, it, there is some development potential, but it's limited and it's exactly the same now as it would be after this uh, of the granting of this map. Second, um, I don't see how it would add to traffic over above and beyond uh, what's already there. Again, since there's no more units that could be created there after the subdivision as before, I don't see the potential for additional traffic or parking problems. Yes, it's true that there could be people parking on the street, but that could happen now. Um, does that help at all? Or um, trying, I'm trying to remember what are the questions you want, want me to address?
Um, the, the parking specifically, I was just asking because potentially if it will be sold to a different owner who has more people than one person living in that unit, right? That we already talking about two, three cars that potentially could be happening there.
We have no means of controlling who lives in those units.
Exactly, exactly.
And nor I think are we able to justify denial based on who might live in those units. There exists, their current occupancy potential is what it is. Uh, there isn't any change in that being created by the subdivision ordinance. Um, there's no change on the ground at all. Just, just as more people could move in after a subdivision, they could certainly move in now. So again, I I don't see any change in that respect.
So how um, so based on the finding, the site is not physically suitable for the proposed density of development. Uh, how do we control the density of development? I I guess, like what, how do we find that this finding is applicable?
Well, there is the existing density, which is legal non-conforming. And uh, they're allowed to keep what is there now. Uh, whether or not, again, uh, they have two condos or one, one lot. Uh, whatever it potential there is to increase the density would be by operation of state law. And that increased potential would be exactly, again, exactly the same. Uh, whether or not this condo goes through. The, the most likely, in fact, the only potential I can think of would be to create an ADU on the property, and they could certainly do that now. So again, I I don't see any difference being created by this subdivision.
Okay.
And in fact, at one point, I'm no expert on this. Maybe staff could speak to it, but I suspect that creating two separate units would actually increase the value of the overall site because they could be conveyed separately. I'm not sure about that, though.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, Martha, would you cl- clear up the parking in front of these units? Um, there's two in the carport and there are two.
Parking spaces in the carport, and then there's two parking spaces on the driveway. So currently the site can accommodate four vehicles. And I think given, you know, the small, relatively small size of these units, these are 1,200 square feet, likely are not going to have you know, more than two people in each, in each unit um, would my best estimate. So I think the smaller size limits the occupancy. Given the amount of space and 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 rooms. Um, and then also, I'd like to add, when these units were constructed, it did meet was, it did, at the time, the property was owned R three. And the unit, the lot area per unit was 3,000 square feet. Um, so with 6,000 square feet, you could have two units. And then at some point, that was changed to R two. And then the minimum parcel unit area per, per unit went up to 4,000 square feet. So it was legally constructed in the sixties. The, the two units were, were allowed.
Okay, um, over to you, Daniel.
Yeah, uh, I think one of the major considerations for me is the fact that this property already exists this way. Uh, they're not proposing any additional square footage uh, or lot coverage. Um, and um, the fact that um, it was largely conforming at the time and when you include the um, Board of Adjustment variance. Uh, and um, and under the Subdivision Map Act, uh, and I read those things, I don't see any justification for denial. Um, so I'm supportive of this as the recommendation made by the planning staff.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Margaret?
I, I it's unusual for sure. Um, I've, I have a lot of uneasiness about the fact that it's so non-conforming to everything that we have in place today. But given the fact that it was conforming or allowed at the time, I I don't know what uh, I could say um, that would deny the approval of this. Uh, I feel uneasy, I still feel uneasy about requirement C because I, I don't think this site is suitable for two homes on it, but that's not what we're here to decide.
They kind of exist, so.
Exactly. And they're not changing.
Right. All right. Okay. Anything else you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. For myself, I think that the idea of condominium conversion raises a lot of hackles historically with a lot of folks. Um, but I uh, see that in this case, having one property with these two homes on it was kind of odd and adverse. Having two condominiums there, I think actually makes the property contrary to Valerie's thought. I think it makes it a higher value to create two separate entities that can be sold and managed, owned equity created for the area. And um, uh, I think that the current parking restrictions you guys have, the state law has lifted some of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what we had a few years ago is no longer the case for parking requirements. Somebody said you can't do that, as I recall. Is that correct?
You can't do it with ADUs.
Yeah, right, okay. So I think the fact that these are there, they exist. Nobody wants to change anything. They just want to change the format of the ownership. Um, the CCNRs are going to be created to drive this thing the way condominium should be done. Um, I think that um, navigating all of these elements of this conversion uh, was a series of checkboxes that you guys went through and got them cleared and off the table. Um, so I think that this is a good thing for this ownership. I think it's a good thing for that area. Uh, there's such a hodgepodge of buildings over there that if one owner wanted to paint it green and the other one blue, that'd be okay. Separate owners, all right. So um, they can't add to it. If they tore these things down, they'd be severely limited by what could go back. So it would be a postage stamp, smaller, that that would be allowed. I just don't know how it would be possible. So if development exists, further development would be much smaller. So therefore, I'm going to say that I can support this and um, ask for a motion from one of the other commissioners to move this forward.
Uh, I move uh, I move that the Planning Commission approve Corder Madera Planning Commission Resolution number two, four, zero, zero, eight, Resolution for the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madera, recommending that the Town Council adopt a resolution approving tentative parcel map PL two, two, dash, zero, zero, five, five for condominium conversion at one fifteen, one seventeen Redwood Avenue.
Do we have a second for this?
Second.
Okay. Let's take the vote, please.
That's me. Commissioner Bendel.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Boshier.
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Okay, so anything else you have to tell us about that, Tracy? It just goes right to council. Um, and then is this a single reading or a double reading for them?
It's a single reading at the Town Council. It's a resolution. And then before the parcel map is executed and recorded, the town will review the CCNRs, both staff and then also Ann as well. So that will be required before it can be recorded.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we can uh, put this behind us and we can move on to seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive. This is a sign permit application PL twenty-four dash zero, zero, one, three to rebrand the existing gasoline service station with new Chevron signage on the existing building canopy, fuel pumps, and a new freestanding monument sign. So Tracy, uh, you have a lot of time on this. Here comes Mr. Rizzo. We'll let him get settled and the uh, applicants in the room.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Chase. Evening, commissioners. As Peter said, uh, this evening, we are conducting a public hearing for a signed permit application to rebrand the existing seventy-six station at seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive as a Chevron station, including building signage, fuel pump signage, and a new freestanding monument sign. Uh, previously, the Planning Commission July of twenty twenty-three conducted a preliminary review of an application uh, to, for modifications to the exterior of the service station building and canopy landscaping and new signage. The preliminary review provided initial feedback to the applicant on their proposed project, and uh, no decision or formal action was taken at the preliminary. Subsequent to that, a formal application for design review was submitted for renovation of the existing building, a replacement trash enclosure and site landscaping. The project included a conditional use permit application to modify the interior of the existing service station building to remove the auto service and smog check component and convert the building entirely to mini mart use. The Planning Commission conducted a formal hearing on uh, the design review and use permit January ninth, twenty twenty-four, uh, which was approved by the uh, both applications were approved by the commission. The design review and use permit did not uh, include any changes to signage uh, for the station. Building permit application has uh, been filed um, for this project. Um, the exterior renovation, trash enclosure, and landscaping in April and is currently still under this evening, of course, we are considering a signed permit application. Um, and which I'll go into greater detail momentarily. The project site is seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive. It's located at the northeast section of Tamil Pious and Madera Boulevard. The site is approximately fifteen thousand square feet in area. It's developed with a fifteen hundred square foot uh, building and a twenty-five by forty-five foot service station canopy just south of the building. To the n- north and east of the project site is the Town Center Shopping Mall, zone C two, regional shopping, the same as the project site. To the west across M- Madera Boulevard is a standalone office building, which is zone O, professional and administrative office. And to the south, across Tamil Pious Drive, are a variety of commercial establishments, which are all zone C one, local shopping. This photo shows the existing at the project site. The applicant proposes to rebrand the site as a Chevron gas station. The project includes removal of all of the Unical seventy-six signage at the site, including the signage at the fuel pumps, the building signage, and the existing freestanding hole sign at the corner and attached fuel price sign. No modifications are proposed to the previously approved exterior renovation, trash enclosure, or site landscape. The applicant, application includes a building sign. The building sign will read Food Mart and is positioned above the entry doors on the south elevation of the building. It measures ten feet wide by two feet, four inches in height, for about twenty-three square feet of sign area. The applicant does not propose to illuminate the sign. The application includes fuel pump uh, signage. There is an exist, there's an existing fuel pump area that contains eight fuel pump positions underneath the canopy. The area at the top of the fuel pumps is called the spanner. The project includes the Chevron logo mark at the top of each spanner. It will be on both sides. That hallmark logo is point seven square feet in area. Also, at the center of the spanner in the middle is a Tecron graphic. Again, on both sides of each of the pumps, that graphic is point two, one square feet in area. The spanners also include a number from one to eight. The number, just to identify the pumps, it also will read turn off engine and no smoking. And these signs are informational and directional in nature and are therefore pursuant to our sign ordinance. They are not included in total sign area and not necessary to approve under design review. At the bottom of each pump is what's called a door. The Chevron hallmark will be present at the door. Those, again, on both sides of each pump measure point three square feet in area each. The Chevron hallmark will be present at the door, those, again on both sides of each pump, measure 0.3 square feet in area each. And there's an additional with Tecron graphic on the door area, that's 2.39 square feet in area, and again also on both sides of each of the pumps. None of the fuel pump signage is proposed. The application includes an illuminated sign for the canopy. The sign will read Chevron. A new sign support will be installed on the south, under the gable end of the south elevation to support the sign. It faces south towards Tamil Pious Drive. There is no change to the size or height of the canopy. There's an existing orange stripe on the canopy that'll be repainted in Chevron blue and then they'll need to repaint the south elevation in white once the sign is installed. The proposed sign is 7 feet wide by 7 feet 5 and a smidge wide by 1, 1 foot 5 inches in height for 10.5 square feet in area. It will be internally LED illuminated. It is proposed to be illuminated from dusk to dawn because the existing fuel pumps operate 24 hours a day. The proposed color temperature of this sign is 7100 Kelvin. The applicants also propose a new freestanding two-sided illuminated monument sign. It measures 7 feet 3 and 1/2 inches in width and 5 feet 4 inches in height, the maximum height allowed for a freestanding sign is 15 feet. The total proposed sign area for the freestanding sign is 34 and 1/2 square feet, and this is for only one face. Pursuant to our sign ordinance, when calculating total sign area for a freestanding sign, only one face is included, provided that the two faces are parallel and are no more than 18 inches apart at any point. Half the monument sign includes Chevron logos and the other half is fuel price, fuel pricing. State of California Business and Professions Code regulates signage related to pricing of motor vehicle fuels. The regulations state that a place of business that sells fuel to the public must include on the premises an advertising medium showing fuel pricing that is clearly visible from the street or from streets if it's located at an intersection. It also prescribes standards related to the clarity and visibility of the fuel pricing. For example, it sets forth that fuel pricing numerals must be a minimum of 6 inches in height. They have to be a uniform size and color and any wording or other figures used with the fuel pricing needs to be no less than one half of the size of the numerals. Since the state of California regulates, regulates full fuel pricing so closely, the Corder Madera sign ordinance exempts fuel pricing signs from design review approval as long as the fuel pricing does not exceed 30 square feet in area and its numerals do not exceed the maximum set by state law. The fuel price portion of the proposed freestanding sign is 13.1 square feet and the numerals are 6 inches, therefore, the portion of the monument sign that's subject to discretionary design review counts towards total sign area is the portion of the sign with the Chevron and the food mart logos. Total sign area for the proposed monument sign is 34 and 1/2 square feet, that includes the fuel pricing portion. Without the fuel price portion, the sign area is approximately 20.4 square feet. Maximum allowed sign area for freestanding signs is 40 square feet. The proposed location of the freestanding sign is at the southwest corner of the site near the Tamil Pious and Madera Boulevard intersection, it's in the same location as the existing 76 pole sign and attached fuel pricing. Given the proposed location of the freestanding monument sign near a busy intersection, the public works director requested that the applicant provide a site distance analysis from a professional traffic engineer. That analysis is included as attachment 5 to your staff report. The analysis concluded that the proposed monument sign is located in such a way that site distances are maintained intersection and that adequate visibility will be maintained for or motorists traveling in either direction. The public works director did review the report from the traffic engineer and concurred with his analysis of site distance. The applicant proposes to illuminate the freestanding sign. The portion of the sign with the Chevron logo and the portion of the sign with the fuel price digits, including the Tecron and food mart portion of the sign will be internally LED illuminated. The Chevron logo portion of the sign will turn off, turn on at dusk and off at dawn because the fuel pumps operate 24 hours. The monument signs' fuel price digits are illuminated at all times. The brightness of the digits is dimmed at night, it has a photo eye control that automatically dims based on the ambient light conditions. The applicant has also provided a nighttime photo of a similarly illuminated Chevron monument sign that's shown on the right of this slide. The proposed color temperature of the freestanding sign is 7100 Kelvin. And staff is recommending a reduction to the proposed color temperature of this sign. This includes the canopy signs brightness, the reduction would be from 7100 Kelvin to 3000 Kelvin, which aligns closely with the town center sign guidelines, which require between all signs to be illuminated at between 2,500 and 3000 Kelvin. And the village, their sign guidelines also require maximum 3000 Kelvin for This is condition of approval 12C, the draft resolution. This slide is showing total proposed sign area for the freestanding sign. As I stated previously, 34 and 1/2 includes the fuel pricing, so without that, they're around 20.4 square feet for the freestanding sign where maximum allowed is 40 square feet. This slide is showing a table with all of the proposed building canopy and fuel pump signage, the second to the bottom row provides the total at 62, 62.72 square feet. Sign area maximum allowed for this site is 111 square feet. The town sign ordinance states that in order to approve a sign permit, that planning commission affirm all eight design review findings. And analysis of those is included in your draft resolution. And in addition to those findings for any application for a freestanding sign, the commission must also affirm findings from Section 1822060 of our sign ordinance. Those three findings are on screen here. And an analysis of each of those findings is included in your staff report and also in the draft resolution. And I'm of course happy to answer any questions you have about design review or freestanding sign findings related to this application.
Could you leave that up for a minute?
I sure can. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the draft resolution, which would approve sign permit application to rebrand 76 station as a Chevron station. A new canopy sign, fuel pump signage, building sign. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
Thank you very much, Tracy. We'll ask any of the commissioners if they have questions for you. I'll start over here to my right with Valerie and see if she's got some questions for you.
Just have one question, there was a neighbor who was concerned about the sign elimination for this particular property. Did we hear anything back from him on this?
We have not.
Okay.
Thank you, Margaret Mandel.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, then over to you, Dan.
There was some reference to a sign similar to Bank of America, a monument sign. Can you address that?
Yes, there's an existing Bank of America monument sign diagonally across the corner in front Bank of America, so at the intersection of
Casa Buena.
That Casa Buena and Tamil Pious Drive, and I do have the dimensions of that sign. The Bank of America sign is 5 feet tall and 12 inches deep. Six, excuse me, 5 feet tall and 6 feet wide and 12 inches deep. Similarly sized. The proposed monument sign for Chevron is 7, it's just over 7 feet wide and 5 feet 4.
The sign is angled, do you know if that was because of the sight lines requirement?
That came from the director of public works suggesting that perpendicular sign was less favorable than something that was angled that would allow a pedestrian standing waiting or pedestrians standing waiting to be more easily seen.
Okay.
All right, Dan, then we have Mr. Rizzo with us, so.
I have a few questions, is the pole sign considered a monument sign, just a monument sign on a pole? Like, has it fallen to the same category?
So we see many forms, some of our car dealerships have taller ones. IMAX, we commonly see monument signs, I think it pointed out there's two at town center, B of A, and then Pete's has a lower one, I think about 7 or 8 feet tall. The pole sign is another form of freestanding sign we see less often. I would probably say that the Best Western is the closest thing. Square at the top, but it's mounted out with a significant So monument sign, pole sign, the traditional freestanding signs.
Does the pole sign and a monument sign have similar restrictions on the square footage, or?
We would treat them the same in terms of freestanding sign regulations. I think the pole sign we measured drawing a box around it, it's the diameter. I believe it's 5 by 5 and I think the applicant overestimated its size at 8 by 8, but I'm looking back at the last building permit for that particular sign, it was 5 feet by 5. 18 feet in height, so the base of the ball is 13 feet above grade. And there's an attached fuel pricing that kind of hangs off the side of the pole just below the ball, so there's, there's less clearance than 13 feet really.
And with all the discussions the staff has had with all the departments, is the monument sign a preferred a preferred application with everything taken consideration with the neighborhood across the street that's residential and maybe some of the other I guess the kitty corner sign being similar to what's being proposed, is this something staff would rather have?
I think that the monument sign is more modest than what you see at the car dealerships, for instance, those are that tall so that they can be visible from the freeway and that's not necessary for this site. It's been reviewed by public works and the public works director is comfortable with the analysis provided by the traffic engineer that their site distances and stopping distances are going to be that intersection with the monument sign.
And is the dimming just going to happen on this sign, the monument sign?
They dim the price, the fuel price digits. In the day, they're dimmed because it's not necessarily
Yeah, correct.
necessary to be bright, and I think I'll have the applicant explain
Okay.
how that's supposed to work. The color temperature recommendation staff is really 7100 Ks. Really a bluish white hue that's very reminiscent of a partial outdoor bright lighting. Line with town center, it will be preferable in terms of maximum color temperature for either of the illuminated signs, this gas station.
And originally I thought that the canopy sign that fits under the canopy that was a box sign, but it looks like it's a channel set?
It's a channel and it's mounted to
And it's mounted to like with a black painted piece of metal or something?
I don't know if they'll paint it black or white, they've called out white maybe.
Okay, what is this channel, okay.
Be, excuse me, there should be a
It just says painted, oh, there you go, steel white.
Yeah, there's a couple of projections that they're mounting the sign support from on that south end of the canopy that will be affected by the installation and it's already a white or grayish white and they're going to paint that end white according to their drawings. I'll ask the applicant to confirm that, what the background of the sign is going to be. The sign's
Okay, I could, I could bring that back up.
On the sign page there, it says painted metallic silver. So as I understand it, for various reasons, only one side of the monument sign counts.
Correct.
And that's our sign ordinance, there's just no way around that. Yeah, okay. There is no lighting on the pumps, is that correct?
The pumps are lit from the canopy, existing canopy lights above, so they're not the graphics or the pump itself is not internally illuminated. But there's lights provided for the use of the pumps that are coming straight down off of the canopy. We have a picture of what that looks like at night today.
Yeah, okay, which I hadn't thought of that, begs the question, are those part of the building permit? Or, because there are lights there now, but you're talking probably about a greater lighting under the canopy.
At the moment, the building permit does not include a change to the canopy.
Lighting, okay. We'll comment on the color temp and all that later. And the you said the lumens are adjustable on the monument sign, but not anywhere else, is that correct?
Fuel pricing digits have dimmer that dims them based on a The applicant has stated that the canopy sign does not dim the logo portions of the Chevron sign do not dim.
Okay. All right, so I think it's, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, but I was just going to ask it, are we, are they also required to shut off at a certain time, is this 24/7?
The way that our municipal code or sign ordinance reads is that illuminated signs shall be turned off at the close of business or at 11 PM, whichever is later. And the close of business, for this business, their fuel pumps operate 24 hours, so they're not proposing to have them turn off the canopy sign or monument sign. And Do we have currently any regulations? Restrictions, how many? We don't.
All right, so then we'll close the question of staff and then we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation to us about the sign application. So please step up to the microphone.
Hi, my name's John Sebo with Cal Craft Corporation. And as Tracy said, we are proposing the said signage on our drawings. I guess you had some questions regarding the material that the channel letters were mounting to. The channel letters are a metallic silver on the outside, the faces are white. The channel letters will mount to a piece of white ACM, ACM is aluminum composite material. It's a prefinished aluminum flat that will mount to the end of the canopy and the channel letters will be attached to that. Was there any specific questions you had?
We have been before us.
Sure, I, 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 does the background need to be as long as it is, it extends quite a bit further than the signage itself.
On which, the channel letters?
Correct.
I don't really think the drawing is showing the background. So what it's showing right there, and that's beyond where the sign is going to go. That is a piece of tube steel that the canopy is actually supported by. You can see it in the picture above.
Okay, so are you proposing that the background or whatever is being illuminated against is about as long as the sign itself?
Yes.
How, how is that going to be mounted to the canopy?
It'll be mounted, we'll have some framing that comes down from the E portion of the canopy. And then the background will be mounted to those frames.
So is it going to be tucked tight, or are you going to have tube steel coming down?
No, it'll, it'll, you won't see the tube steel.
Okay.
It'll all be covered by the ACM, the white ACM.
And I'll let him finish the presentation.
Yeah, so what else do you want to tell us about your application?
We have given several consent of items, the original canopy that we proposed was going to have the Chevron fascia system all the way around. They, the staff did not think it was going to be good for that particular location to have that, so we changed it. We actually shrunk the size of the price sign significantly, it was originally going to be probably double the size of what is proposed now.
Okay. Is that just based on the staff input to you, or?
It was.
Yeah. Right, okay. What else do you want to tell us, then?
Um, that's about it.
Okay. The question about lumens has come up from Valerie. Because we've experienced this before in Corder Madera, that there is no ordinance saying what is appropriate lumens, does this system have any adjustability for brightness?
The LED digits do. The controller that's mounted inside the C store where they change the prices also has a control unit where you can adjust the digits, the brightness, from one to ten. And you can change it that way. As far as the sign goes, the internals, illumination inside, those are not adjustable.
Is that based on the is my lack of technical naming of that element that would provide that, it's like a low voltage, yeah, transformer or something, that it's not an adjustable transformer?
No, it's not. The sign can also be have a photocell attached to it that would regulate when the sign comes on and when it goes off. The digits will be twenty-four seven, no matter what. Stay on twenty-four hours a day. But the sign can be put on a photocell to where it goes off when the sun comes up and comes on when the sun goes down.
Okay, is it a matter of cost to have a adjustable power supply? Or it's not a part of what you would normally?
It's not part of what we normally get from the manufacturer.
But is it possible to get?
It probably is.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, in the past, there was always discussion that staff would determine if it was too bright.
Right.
And then try to get it adjusted downward if that were the case, so. Having that adjustability is important, rather than being stuck with it too bright. So, okay. Missioners, questions for this gentleman? Yes?
Have you produced a picture of what the building will look like with all this new signage?
It's on the drawings, I believe. Building is on E one.
Third page.
The top.
Right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean just the building, the site. What it would, what it would look like, like there's an existing photograph, three existing photographs on that page below. Have you produced one that shows it? Shows what you're proposing?
The two illustrations down at the bottom left is what is proposed for the canopy.
It's just not very helpful when you can't see what the whole thing is going to look like. The whole site. And the proportion of the signs to the different pieces of it.
They would normally have to take a different technology to create that. I will interject on this and just say that they're not proposing any change to the site lighting, right? For the canopy or anything else, so that wouldn't change. It's just the
So are you comparing the what the food mart sign looks like to the smog shop in the photograph, is that?
The photograph, that smog shop sign is being removed. The building is being painted. And the food mart sign is being installed over the front door.
And the food mart sign will have this blue background with sort of a white tail on it?
Yes. And it's non-illuminated.
Okay, and I guess this might have been covered already, but when on the canopy sign, it says the building sign is not dimmable. Is that because is dimmability, highly technical word, available?
That I don't know for sure.
Okay.
It possibly is, but I don't think so. They're really not real bright.
Okay, and why do you have that, the sign lighting temperature, why is it so much higher than what the rest of the shopping center uses?
I can't answer that question, the lighting and the signs is a pre-manufactured item. They all come the same from the factory.
Okay, one of the findings that needs to be made is that the signs are visually harmonious with surrounding development. So how would you look at that finding? How would you say you've met that finding?
Well, I'm not sure how to answer that question. What are you asking?
If you, you believe when you design these signs that they were visually harmonious with the surrounding development.
I didn't design these signs, they're designed by Chevrons.
Oh, I see.
Sign manufacturer, they are the same all over the United States.
So Chevron has never really looked at the site as a site in Corder Madera?
No. I mean, yes, they have looked at it. But that's not going to change the way their sign looks.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, anything for the gentleman?
Uh, yeah. The monument sign, freestanding sign, the way it's currently oriented on the site plan. The back of the sign faces essentially the building. So it doesn't seem like anybody on either of the roads could see the sign. And anybody on the site probably already knows it's Chevron. And according to the findings we have to make, there has to be a reason for a sign to be two-sided. And I don't see that reason, given the sign, I think if it were perpendicular to the streets, I could see it, but this one, the back of the sign, and because it's lit, it just throws a lot of superfluous light into the atmosphere.
The sign, the prices have to be visible from all directions of traffic.
Okay, but the Chevron part of the sign doesn't have to be.
Well, you do want the people on the streets to know it's a Chevron. And you're advertising the prices that are supposed to be visible to all traffic patterns. Then if you're a Chevron and you want to attract Chevron customers, then you want that Chevron visible from all directions of traffic as well.
Are you familiar with the Chevron station? In the at St. Francis Drake and Barry Way in the Green Bay Shopping Center?
No, I'm not.
So they have a monument sign that only has the prices on it. And they have a banner sign on the canopy. And that's all their signage, and so that presumably was approved and is part of the sign types that are available at Chevron. So that could be possible here.
If if what you're talking about is what I'm thinking of, that is typically a secondary price sign? Is that their only price sign?
That's their only price sign. It's also only visible from Barry Way and not from Sir Francis Drake.
Okay, again, I'm not familiar with that site. But he was just telling me that by state law, the Chevron has to be visible.
By state law? Can the staff respond to that, because that was not anything that was in the report?
I believe the gentleman means that the price signs have to be visible, they have to be a minimum of six inches.
The gentleman here who actually works for Chevron, he said it has to be, the Chevron has to be visible too. You must advertise what gasoline you're selling, whether it's seventy-six or Chevron or Shell.
Well, there's signs on the pump, and then there's the sign on the canopy.
I, I agree with you, but again, it's not on the actual price sign that you're.
How big would the Chevron symbol and name have to be on the price sign to meet state law?
I don't know.
Well, we need to find out.
So let me interject here, I think that the applicant is proposing this sign with both the Chevron and brand and the prices on it. That's what's before us, so. You know, and this gentleman here says that that's state law, I don't know if anybody knows about that or not on staff, that you have to have the branding on the sign.
That's something that we need to spend a little time to read and look up whether or not brands be included, I'll see if I can come up with that in the next few minutes. We can certainly find that out and come back to the commission with that information.
Thank you, so Dan, the impetus of your question is you want to just get the costing, the pricing alone on the sign, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, and I think the sign is too big, this is a very sensitive location, we've all talked about this when we did the design review on the building. That this is really the front door of Corder Madera. And I think the scale of this sign, the standing sign is way out of scale at five, seven something feet by five something feet.
Way smaller than what's there now.
Well, it doesn't mean that what's there now, which was done many, many years ago, was reviewed by this commission or that we had the same design guidelines and signage guidelines back then. Also, just because we have sign regulations that have maximums, that doesn't mean in any particular situation that the maximum is necessarily appropriate. Anyway, that's, those are my questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, anybody else back over here?
I have a few.
Okay.
And in other applications where you're on a corner, are there, are there situations where you have two signs that are not in the corner? I was just, I'm just curious, because it just seems like, I mean, I kind of agree with some of the other commissioners, you don't really see the backside of this, I mean, how are, how is it treated in some other locations where it's a requirement to be seen on both streets?
Like when it's on a corner like it is now?
Correct.
You can put a sign on each street frontage. For instance, where the canopy is, if there is a planter or somewhere that a price sign can go right there, I don't think there is a room there on those street frontages to do that. So I think that's why the sign is at the corner of the lot. It's to incorporate both street frontages at one spot. Because a lot of times there are setbacks from the sidewalk to where the sign is. And that, if we have to abide by those setbacks, a lot of times that puts the sign in the parking lot.
Well, it looks like this guy's right on the property line, it doesn't show it connecting, but I would imagine it kind of goes towards around the curve there. Our, and this might be for the applicant from our last meeting, is the reason that you're moving the food mart sign from the sign on the side of the building that's blank to over the door because we have hedges there? Is this the area to the right of the entry, I believe that we had approved landscaping plan with some creeping vines or is that one of the reasons that that signs moved, because when I was walking the site, it seems like that sign's going to be very tucked away. Not really visible.
Are you talking about the smog shop sign?
Correct. At that location, are, are there still going to be, is there still going to be landscaping up that wall, is that the reason why that sign's being moved?
No, the food mart sign is being put over the food mart front door to so the customers know where to walk in to get the food mart, rather than have it over to the side.
I can just clarify, you're correct that the creeping vine was conditioned to be present at the west elevation and east elevation spaced every four to five feet, and at the south elevation to the right of the storefront glazing. I don't know if that's the reason why they are not proposing the sign in that particular location.
It sounds like it's an entry thing.
You're right, that
Yeah, yeah.
they do line up.
When I was just walking aside, it was very, it's very, it's kind of, by the time you get the canopy and all of the the pumps, you can't even see the sign, so I was just curious if that was the best location, but since we're doing the landscaping, it seems like that's the logical place for it. And that's going to be kind of suspended with some steel posts as well?
It mounts right to the face of the aluminum storefront.
Screwed into it.
I do believe that there are two separate door locations there now. I believe they're being moved to the center to where there's one door location now.
Correct. Okay, that's pretty much what I have.
Okay, Jim.
Thanks.
Up the Green Bay. So it does have the branding, it has a nice landscape.
So the photograph that's in staff report is that photograph?
Yeah, it just kind of in a context of
So Dan, that's the photograph that is over there at that gas station.
Which gas station?
The one you were bringing up about Sir Francis Drake. Valerie Scott.
Can I stand corrected?
Anyway, okay.
Okay.
So Valerie, anything else from you or?
Are we moving to the comment section?
No, that's
Okay.
All right. So should we let this gentleman sit down or does anybody else from the applicant want to make a presentation of any kind? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, at this point, we have to see if there's anybody online to make comment. We'll open it up for that. Any hands raised?
Um, a representative for Calcraft Sign Corporation has signed in online and his hand is raised. Um, maybe he wasn't aware he could unmute himself during the discussion, Chair Chase, if I'd like to hear from him. Time.
All right. So we don't know if he wants to say anything or not.
Yeah. Hi, I'm sorry. This is uh Brian Collins over at Calcraft. I apologize for not chiming in sooner. I've been working with Tracy uh on the revisions to the permit drawings and trying to make sure we get everything clarified and just wanted to touch base on a few items. Um, and I'll start off with the monument sign located at the corner and mainly the illuminated uh discussion you guys were having about rotating it and it not being visible from the C store. So Chevron Corp, or corporate Chevron does have a standard to have the sign perpendicular to the main streets. But because of the public works and traffic engineering requirement and recommendation to rotate the sign, um, that's why we have that one side facing the C store. But that also means that the uh customers entering the service station from Tamalpais don't really have a clear, visible view of the price sign. So that's why we'd like to keep the interior side illuminated as well. And I know it's a weights and measures, you are correct, to have the pricer digits visible from both streets. And this site unfortunately didn't have a viable option to have two price signs, uh, one on each main street. So we went with a similar location and rotated the monument sign. And I believe Tracy mentioned that there's a similar sized Bank of America monument sign across the street, which is kind of why we're we're sticking with this size. And as John mentioned, we, we decreased the square footage quite a bit from the original proposal, lowered the monument sign base um to help with the engineering traffic report. And I think that was, those were the main changes. The pricer digits are controlled by a photo eye control that automatically dims them based on ambient lighting. So the darker gets, the dimmer the, the digits, the digits get as well. But the LED internal lighting isn't dimmable. We did sign manufacturer, and they said if there is a condition of approval that it has to go down to the three thousand uh brightness that Tracy mentioned, that's something that they can do rather than that. I don't think the manufacturer makes a dimmable option for the internal lighting, but we do have the option for the lower brightness.
Okay, so you can get it down to three thousand Kelvin, but the drivers are not dimmable?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and that goes for the uh canopy, uh, the Chevron canopy sign as well. We can have the manufacturer install the three thousand LEDs instead.
Great. So um, you're a sign guy. Are you familiar with any of this uh uh requirement for what goes on the monument sign with the uh pricing?
It is a California weights and measures thing for the pricer itself, and it's for visible from especially on these corner lots, visible from all primary streets. Uh, which is why we were hoping to go with the perpendicular option with, which lines up with Chevron's guidelines. But again, to help with the traffic engineer report, um, we had to rotate it. But it still limits kind of the visibility for the price sign itself from both streets. So we'd like to keep both signs. Whether it's if you're just pulling up uh into the, under the canopy so you can see it from the interior side, or if you can see it from the opposite side that's visible from the street is kind of our reasoning. Because if we were able to keep it perpendicular as we originally proposed, then we definitely would, would have needed to keep both signs or sides illuminated.
Okay, great. Um, are you aware of anything about the branding on these signs as a requirement by the state?
Um, that part, I'm not too sure. He is, John's correct that it's the, you have to display what the product is, and it is a Chevron product itself. And even the with Tecron is a proprietary uh product that Chevron requires to let its customers know that that's part of the product that they're selling. So that area is a little gray, but it is something that is pretty much installed on every every Chevron site across the US.
Chair Chase, I did find that section of the Business of Professionals Code. It, it doesn't explicitly say that the brand needs to be stated, but I can see how it's interpreted that way. It talks about if there is no brand, that the words no brand need to be um shown in leathers and Gothic type, and it goes into a lot of detail. So I, I think just looking at how this is interpreted, I think it's correct that we would have to have the brand on the sign.
Yes, Chair Chase, as long as we're on that topic, I did find a section of the Business and Professions Code that does require that we stipulate, that they stipulate the brand on the same sign as the prices.
Okay.
That would be section uh Business and Professions thirteen, five, three, two.
All right, thank you. Um, Jim, you have one, something to say?
I was just curious if it was originally proposed to be perpendicular, then wouldn't it not be visible for one of the streets? So that brought me back to my original question. If there was a requirement for a second sign, if it was perpendicular to one of the streets, then you wouldn't be, you'd be seeing the edge of it from the other street, correct?
It would be uh perpendicular to Tamalpais. So if you're driving down Tamalpais in either direction, you would see it. And as you drove up uh on Tamal Vista, you would see it to the stop sign.
Correct.
But just from Madera and one side of Tamal, okay.
And since we only have uh the one, what side is it? The one, really the only, I mean, the colors give it away. Um, and we don't want to overbrand the site by any means. Uh, but we only have, as of right now, one Chevron sign on the canopy located on the south side of it. Um, so there's really not a lot. Obviously, our customers are going to know what the site is, but there's not a lot of actual Chevron branding at the site, letting them know what it is. So I think the monument sign having the additional logo face helps especially with the Madera Boulevard side.
Could be light up on there. Um, and I'm not quite sure, is the manufacturer unwilling to put a dimmer on the drivers? Because I've never heard of a lighting system that can't be dimmed.
Um, I'm not sure if it's more of a trying not to customize the signs for every site or a cost thing, or I know even sometimes there's difficulty with dimming LEDs. Um, but it's just some manufacturers are willing to work on it and others would just prefer putting the uh lower brightness LEDs in, in the internal cabinet. But that's something that we can definitely look into. I just know in the past we've had similar requests and we usually end up going with a different model of LEDs. That would be appreciated.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions for this gentleman? Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, I, I understand that many of these signs are standard and part of a Chevron template. But in this monument sign, um, would it be possible um to have the um food mart and um Tecron um stacked below the Chevron, which would allow you to reduce the height of the sign by a foot?
stacked below?
The Chevron's small.
So the Chevron would be uh
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Would be a little bit
Yeah, again, that's just, it's, these things are the manufacturers already have their shop drawings, their fabrication templates. Um, even their cabinets prefabricated, so it, it very quickly turns into a custom sign that gets very expensive for the property owner. Um, and again, we, we even raised a, a typical base height on a Chevron monument sign is twelve inches, all the way up to thirty inches. And we raised that again down to, I think we're showing four and a quarter inches tall, just to help with the traffic engineer report. Try and make it similar to the other monument sign across the street. And I believe the one, there's another Chevron down the street that has kind of a similar layout for the, for the logos, for the Chevron logo, the with Tecron and maybe even a food mart. So
Thank you.
Uh, in your sign detail, it shows that there are three grades of gasoline and diesel at the bottom. Um, that occupies the verticality of the site, of the sign primarily. Is that the drawing is accurate then to show all four fuels on that sign?
Um, does this one have four products? I think we're showing regular plus and supreme.
Okay, no diesel.
And then it's uh two tier, so they have the cash option and then the uh credit, credit debit option.
Okay. So all right, uh, any other questions for this gentleman here?
One, one small one. It looks like you're changing the pumps as well. Is that correct?
The pump units themselves are staying. We're just debranding them with the, the door skins, which are just decal overlays uh over the sheet metal doors at the base and then the valances or spanners uh at the top of the dispenser. The existing ones are the aluminum, uh aluminum uh shell valence that are non-illuminated, and we're doing the plastic Chevron version, which is also non-illuminated. But the dispenser units themselves are staying.
Okay, it looks different in the drawing, but I mean, I don't really care that you're not changing it. Just curious.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, so then I, I stand corrected about the gasoline grades, but the Tecron is considered part of the branding that's necessary?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we've uh exhausted everybody's questions for this gentleman. Is that true? Okay, so sir, we're going to relieve you at the moment and um uh see if there are anybody. Is there anybody else online that would comment? Uh, that was really part of presentation. So it's back to saying, is there somebody who would have a hand up?
Uh, thank you, Chair Chase. There are no hands raised.
Okay. So we therefore have opened and closed public comment for this item. Um, and then uh in that case, we're going to take it back up here and talk about it amongst us up here. So we've heard a lot of information about what the signs have to be, can be uh where they are uh on a canopy, where they are at the corner, uh where they are on the building. So um they've responded to staff's input on the size of these signs. Um, and so let's uh have added here. Um, I'll start with you, Margaret, over there on the left.
Um, and I guess I just have to say it, given the location of this, uh, as Daniel said, that the basically greeting people coming into Corte Madera, I think it's the whole thing's a lost opportunity. And I think I've expressed that before, and um I think it's, it's true. This is very ordinary and commercial and um and nothing special to be very clear about that. Um, given that, I uh, I definitely think that we uh should have that um the opportunity to have this, the uh lights dimmable. And um even though it's a twenty-four hour business, I think that um there should be certain hours where they're dimmer. That's all there is. It's only gas that's twenty-four hours uh worth of uh being open and um, and I just think that the ability to dim a sign like that is necessary. And also that there should be, um, the lighting temperature should be taken down and it should have the same requirement as the rest of the uh other businesses in the shopping center. I agree with Daniel about that uh sign. I think the uh Chevron portion of it could be smaller with food mart and Tecron uh combined underneath a smaller Chevron uh insignia. And um, I think uh Chevron could make uh an exception for Corte Madera, given that it is in such a prime location for us. And it basically uh would help the character of the whole business, I think, be smaller. Um, other than that, I don't think there's too much that we can do about the, the design or anything else. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Um, I'm going to switch ends and go over to Valerie over here.
Okay, so I do agree with staff's recommendation on the color temperature. Um, I also do um appreciate that Chevron might want to have a cooler color just because of the brand identity. Um, it does not conform to the town center guidelines, even though like it doesn't really necessarily guided by town center, that particular location. I do think um having a warmer temperature would look nicer there. But also um the lumens are pretty bright, seven hundred, approximately seven hundred lumens per square foot. That's extremely bright. Um, considering the entire sign is three thousand something there. I, I understand that we do not have any restrictions currently set. I do wonder if we approve it in a condition, if we reduce the luminance to five hundred at least. Um, because it's not the temperature that makes it so bright, it's the lumens. Uh, I am concerned and remembering the um neighbors concern that was talking about the sign being right at his window, uh, you know, having such a bright light uh will not help him at night. Uh, dimmability will help with that, but we also would maybe have to restrict on for how much um, you know, we would have, we would allow the sign to be illuminated at night. Um, restrict how many lumens that would be, to be very formal about it. And other comment is, so again, starting the Greenberry or Chevron site, they actually do not uh say Tecron on their sign. So perhaps there is a possibility to take it out uh from the sign completely, since they don't have it. They also have a nice design approach to the sign. They also have a nice design approach to the sign. It's standing kind of in that brick structure, that um brick is also used for that little mall that is uh in Greenbrier as well. And they have beautiful landscaping around it as well, so it doesn't feel so commercial and harsh in that particular corner. We uh here with fellow commissioners kind of studied the Google Maps to look at that site right now. Um, so perhaps there is a way to upgrade uh the look of the sign a little bit, just rather than having a post on the corner.
Okay, that's your thoughts, okay, great.
My thoughts.
Thank you. All right, Daniel.
Uh, well, I I agree with the staff's recommendation on the color temperature. Uh, um, Valerie has a good point about the lumens, and I think um that's something the commission might consider. Uh, I still think that I understand there's a standard sign for the monument sign, but uh I know in other communities I've been to, um, there's the ability to make adjustments to standard signs. Uh, and um, uh, so again, I'd like to see if it's possible, explore, uh certainly making it maybe lower, maybe can't be any less wide. Um. And I understand that, given the requirement, the price has to be uh visible from both streets and the signs on an angle, I can see how they do have to have the back of the sign illuminated um to meet that requirement. I also think that um uh I think they've done a good job on uh respecting our concern relative to the canopy and uh the signage on the canopy. Uh, and um, and I think that's going to be, you know, positive. Um, uh, the painting and so forth will will be positive uh from an aesthetic point of view.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Jim, resolve.
Kind of fighting myself a little bit with on that orientation of this sign, because it just kind of faces the middle of the street, you're kind of past it, before you know how much everything costs. Um, that doesn't do a very good job of representing what their costs are from from their standpoint. But also my my largest concern about having it on the corner was the visibility to pedestrians really and and bike riders, there's a lot of, a lot of people go across, there's a lot of apartments across the street. Uh, just a concern and just something to discuss, like the orientation of this thing, because it just sort of, to me, it's like it's the back of it doesn't really do anything for anybody and the and the front of it's just facing the middle of the street. Um, but I agree with the rest of the commissioners on the lumens uh and and the brightness. Um, I think putting a dimmer on it would give us a little more flexibility and have so we can go back at a later time and have them own it down if it's uh too bright. Um. Because we don't even 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 going down to 500 lumens per square foot, we don't really know how it bright, that's going to be, it'd be great if we had some dimmable capabilities to it and then have more flexibility in dimming it. Um, as far as the rest of the signs, um, as long as that that sign under the canopy is the backs, the back of the sign that is being uh backed against is smaller, I think that that that's fine, it's kind of tucked away. Um, and I don't know where else you would put the food mart sign if if we've got landscaping, so see a problem with that. Just kind of that or like, what do we do with that corner orientation? And it seems like all the studies were done with it at an angle, so perhaps it just stays in the orientation that it was because it's been approved by the traffic engineer as an angled monument sign, so. Right, um, and and looking at the drawings, it it's only this tall. About that wide. So it might look a little bigger in the in the pictures, but perhaps it's not as big as it it appears. Seven feet by three.
Five five.
Is it five four high?
Yes.
Uh, maybe I'm looking, it's maybe I'm not looking at the oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's um combination of signs with the monument sign, that says four eleven, it's five foot tall by seven, it's five by seven, or seven by five, however you say it. So um it's 34 square feet and the existing um ball sign and pole sign are 67 square feet total combined.
These signs can all be made made without the bottom portion of the sign. Well, 300 retail spaces and they can be done if that's what the commission wants to do. And we can ask that as a condition, it's just not a something standard.
Okay. So here's where we are, I think, and I um uh I think we have to get to a statement about this and we have to put it out and see if we get agreement amongst all the commissioners here. Um, we have the monument sign that is dictated by height for the pricing. I think that there's consensus here not to ask for removal of the Tecron and Food Mart at the bottom and drop it a foot, essentially. It would be four foot tall at that point. I also think that that bare corner could use, to Valerie's point, some surrounding help with landscaping.
Is landscaping, there's nine plants proposed as part of the landscaping previously approved by the commission at the base of the sign.
Uh huh.
It added condition of approval that um if the planter needs to be slightly enlarged, it's it's about 18 and a half feet measured diagonally, it needs to be enlarged slightly to make sure that we can accommodate those um plantings, um that they'd be required to do that.
Okay. So there's something built in already baked into this, the other application for landscaping out there, right?
As part of the previously approved landscape plan of the entire site.
Right. Okay. So, great. The other side of it is that we're all in agreement that this thing needs to be dropped in Kelvin temperature to 3,000. Um, I know that the dimmers can be bought for these drivers that uh it is an additional cost to drop them down. In past years, the agreement with staff was that um we as a commission can't go out and decide it's too bright, but staff can go out based on comment and public input, go out and measure it or look at it, right, and make a determination. Is that fair to say? Okay, great. So um we could ask for that, so we would be coming down to uh those items that we would ask for the bottom foot to be taken off of the sign? Is that what I, I'm looking left and right to see if I have consensus with that?
Is that to remove the Tecron and Food Mart?
Yes. And huh?
Totally removed.
Yes, right.
Because the numbers have to be a certain height, correct?
Right, we can't change the height of the numbers on the Chevron brand that goes next to it.
And we can't change the size of the Chevron.
It equals the size of the gas prices, so side by side.
Oh, it has to be that way.
So we can ask this and um put this in a resolution and then I guess staff can try to uh go back to the applicant and see if we're all on the same page. Is that fair to say? That we can create a resolution with modifications, vote on it, and then it becomes the document that you take back to the applicant, right? Okay. So, um, those are the elements. One, dimmer to 3,000. Two, dimmable uh ballast or dimmable drivers. And three, remove the Tecron and Food Mart sign and drop it down to where it's four foot off the ground.
Uh, Chair Chase, it would help if we could have the applicant confirm that these items are um able to be accomplished.
Okay. Fine, we shall ask you now if you can do that. So please step up to the microphone.
Heard that the the drop in Kelvin is possible, is able to be accomplished. Um, so we're looking to confirm that um a dimmer can be added and included with, I think, both the signs, right? Um, and that the sign graphics be modified to reduce the height by a foot by removing moving the Tecron and Food Mart part of the sign.
Right. Sir?
Hey, um, as far as the dimming goes, I believe that can be accomplished. We will check with the manufacturer and make sure um the removal of the with Tecron and the uh Food Mart is probably also obtainable, um, but it would be a custom cabinet, because those are incorporated and it's a called a C32 sign, and those are incorporated in that C32 sign. It's kind of um putting the market building at a disadvantage because they're not able to advertise that they have a Food Mart other than the Food Mart on the the building, but I believe it can be accomplished. Were those the two items in question?
Dimmable color temp, removal of the bottom, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, with Tecron and the Food Mart cabinet to be removed.
Um, it it would, I think that the feeling among the commissioners here is that it drops that height from five foot, because if you're standing out on that corner, if that sign comes up to here on
Uh huh.
You, so that's a tall sign out there. And um it has a visual impact on the whole corner there, so I think that's what I'm getting and I I would agree with that expression, yeah. So um those would be the way we would uh condition this uh resolution.
Okay.
And um we would put it back to you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So who wants to take a stab at the motion there? Mr. Jim?
Resolution here. Someone's giving a page. You're almost there. There you go.
Oh, that's the wrong one, January 20th. Uh, later, uh, another one.
Attachment.
What's that?
That's for one.
No, that was January.
This one says January 9th.
Yes, I'll go back one careful.
Got nine pages of staff report at the beginning, follows directly thereafter.
There we go.
There we go.
And in the matter of signed permit application, PL24 dash 0031
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, 13 uh to rebrand the existing gasoline service station, 76 station, with the new Chevron signage on the an existing building, canopy, fuel pumps, and new freestanding mo- um monument sign, and move to approve with the following modifications or conditions. Um, one being that we drop the uh the Kelvin
Temperature.
Temperature to 3,000 Kelvin on both illuminated signs. We also um require that the signs be able to be dimmed. And the third, third, um, to remove the bottom portion of the canopy sign.
Oh, boy.
Sorry, sorry, butchering this one. Um, the monument sign um to remove Tecron and Food Mart, um, which effectively would bring the sign down uh plus or minus 12 inches. Correct?
Yes.
12 inches. Uh, and those are the following three conditions and modifications that we would request.
All right, then, will someone second that?
Second.
Okay, we have that second. Now it's time for a vote.
Commissioner Bandol?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Busher? Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, for bearing with us.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Couldn't get that one out.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right, um, does anybody have any commission reports on uh town council or anything? I don't think there is.
It was pretty insulting.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Happy to say.
Then it's up to planning staff to tell us what's up.
Yeah, I have a few things. Uh, first of all, just a gentle reminder to make sure you have your cybersecurity trainings complete. Um, I can email you individually if you're not sure if those were completed or not. And then uh we do have a, um, we just sent out a little news flash today about a anti-housing displacement uh workshop that's happening, I believe on Thursday. Um, so that should be in your email and then we have that news flash that went out, so it'll be on our website. And um the housing bond that I mentioned during my previous report was pulled from um moving forward to the ballot, so uh disregard that information. You probably saw that in the news a few weeks ago. And then more locally, um, Rome Burgers opened at Town Center last week. And so it's open for business. If you would like to go check out your um the decisions you made for the design of that that uh new restaurant there. And just to give you an update on the uh 240 Temel Vista project, which is the um 100% senior affordable project that um with 240 units, we have requested technical assistance from HCD and are still working with them to get that guidance. And the applicant has submitted a formal application and that is currently under completeness review internally. So we'll we'll keep you updated as uh that application moves forward. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Well, wow. Um, is the application available online to see?
Yes.
Okay, it is. Does it change anything from the preliminary application?
There's a slight change in square footage and parking went up a couple spaces, but nothing substantial. Um, there is more information, there's landscaping plans and surveys, so there's a lot more information than what was included in the schematics.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I think the only really remaining thing for us to talk about are the notes. Does anyone have any comments on the notes? Minutes? Anyone? I read them earlier, I didn't see anything to comment on.
I have no, no comment.
All right. Um, we can do a voice vote here to approve. Does everybody say aye to these notes? Minutes?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes are approved unanimously. So um, with that said, um September 24th um I am out uh end of October, early November. That's all I have to say. With that, we will adjourn.